Seven twenty-three.
I've got CDs, DVDs, VHS.
I have, yeah, I have some of that. I don't have an eight-track. Mike Nixon still has the eight-track. I don't think I have anything besides.
Still in his car?
All right. We would call the Finance Committee of Lancaster City Council or six oh one PM. First item we have on the agenda is ordinance six twenty-three, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $2,600,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and replacement of the existing solid waste transfer station, including a prefabricated metal building, concrete pad, driveway approach, fencing, and other necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring emergency. This is coming out of finance. Ms. Cruz, would you like to discuss this for us? You don't want to send me the email, anyway. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
So, you're familiar with the transfer station project? We had a public hearing on it a month ago. We have been kind of going around the best way to finances, and we initially had thought that we would go for an OWDA loan, and that's going to take too long. So then we switched and said, well, maybe a bond anticipation note, and then after talking with our investment banker, he suggested we go with a private placement bond. So that's what this legislation will do. It's $2.6 million. The current estimate for construction is $2.1 million. So, since bids have been coming in 10% over, we've got some cash in there, some contingencies, some construction administration, and of course, the financing, the legal, and the cost of issuing the bond. So that's why it's $2.6 million.
Okay, and I see that, you know, if there is money ultimately left over, it's going to go towards the first payment. Is that the plan?
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Cruz? Mr. Abrams?
Now that we know the price of what the building should be around, is there any more idea of what potential raises to our sanitation rates might be?
Let Sean answer that. He's been working on those numbers.
Good question.
Yeah, so I have been working on all of that data, and I am going to present that in our committee, so we can move that forward and bring that on to all of you. Obviously, as I said in last meeting, and I've been saying since I've been superintendent, yes, we are going to have to look at a rate increase. So I think originally Denise said that the transfer itself was somewhere in the $1.74, I think, ballpark of increase. We've also been encountering, as everybody has, the greatest increases of all time. So, we just received, well, we haven't received yet, we just ordered our first ever trash truck to exceed $300,000 in the history of the city of Lancaster. So, that truck was $321,000. The truck that we bought in 2018 was $265,000. So that gives you an idea of kind of what's going on in our world. So I anticipate it, my request, to be more than that $1.74. But I don't want to give a firm number, and then I'm gathering, I'm gathering all kinds of data. I'm gathering data of what other communities have, what they're doing, what their rates are at, so we can see where we are at. I'm doing ten-year projections of, you know, looking at the magic ball, trying to figure out what we're going to need, how much all of our costs are going to be for the next ten years. And I pretty much have that button down, but I'm definitely going to get that in committee. So hopefully, that's enough answer. I don't want to put a firm number, because I'm not completely set there yet, but, but just to give you a good idea of what I'm looking at.
That's a monthly increase. Clarify that.
Monthly increase, and that would be on residential only.
Yeah. So, do you think, and I know you're still working on it, but do you think by our next meeting, you could have those numbers? I mean, I think when I'm voting on something like this, knowing that that $2.6 million, along with some of the other issues going on, is going to be a large part of why we need the rate increase. So I feel like if I'm going to, for myself, voting on this, I would like to know more exactly where we're going to be at. Do you think?
I mean, I could give you an idea where I'm going to be at, but obviously, I think, personally, it's a little bit cart before the horse, because that comes out of committee. So that's not really, doesn't come, it's not for me to bring that directly here. It's for me to bring that to my council committee, and then that come here out of that. So, I don't want to, I'm not trying to step on my council committee's toes on bringing something straight here that the proper channel for it to do is to go there, then come here. But I mean, I can definitely, you know, provide you any information that I have that you're welcome to look at. It's, I mean, it's stuff that, you know, for instance, and I'm not looking at this number, so I don't want to, but Zanesville began 2023, did a $5 increase on the residential. Not looking at that number, but just as an example of what I'm finding out there, what's going on.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Jack?
What's Zanesville total monthly for residential?
So Zanesville total monthly is $27 for the residential.
So we pay thirteen?
Thirteen fifty is where we are.
So if it went up hypothetically, went up $2.
Yeah, and their senior, which ours is at nine, their senior's at sixteen with their rate increase.
Mr. Martin?
So that is an ordinance change. That, if that occurs, it would come by ordinance and eventually come to city council, and of course, three readings there. It's something that I can increase by my own signature like I can with water and gas. But this and water pollution control, those have to come before the council behold, for that's when that's determined.
And it's certainly that, I don't want to give you a number. I'm just trying to make sure we get a good number, that then I'm not, oh, next year, oh, well, wait a minute, we weren't, this wasn't correct, and we need to look at it again. I'm trying to get it somewhere where it's going to be a good, a good fit for, hopefully, for a number of years, because we've been at the thirteen fifty, Paul probably knows better than I do, of how long.
Twenty years ago.
Yeah, twenty years at that, that rate. I'll say that, as I've called anywhere and everywhere, there's not a whole lot of cities that have the setup like we do, where we have an own city in-house sanitation department, but I've not found anywhere that is even our price. The most I've found is $43 a month for sanitation, and the least I've found is us at thirteen fifty.
Anyone else? Jack?
I do understand what Mr. Abrams is saying, because
And I do, too.
We're voting on $2.6 million with a possibility, or I'm pretty sure a rate increase, but we don't know what the rate increase is going to be. I understand. But if we can go three readings, hopefully, before that third reading, we'll have some real information.
I know the sum of it is timing with our, because our bid's open Friday, so Denise might, yeah, because of bid opening, we have to be in contract within so many days of bid opening.
So we can play with the notice to award a little bit, and what Trish is going to say is, there's some processing that has to go on after you approve it. So, we were trying to do a notice to proceed May first, because it's going to be, we're fighting paving season. By the time the building gets here, we're going to be lucky to get paving now. So, because of Sean's situation out there, we're trying to keep the project moving. But, you know, what Trish is going to tell you, she wants two readings so we can get the paperwork and the process.
In order to get this whole thing facilitated, even after you pass, it's going to take a solid two weeks to process, to even get a start to get money for construction. But we're also in an interest rate volatility time, too, so the sooner we can lock down a lower interest rate, if the feds go up, the interest rate goes up, and which then the payment goes up, so.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. So, this isn't like an option, right? Like, we got to do this.
No, we honestly, we have to do this. Every piece of trash that is picked up in this city goes through that transfer station.
Right. And so I understand to send them to my colleagues at the same time. It's not like it's an option. It's not like, oh, the rate's too high, we're not going to do it, right? That's not what we're talking about here. It's whatever is the cost is.
Honestly, even without the transfer station, costs have increased enough that, even if we weren't building the transfer station, we would be having discussion of raising rates.
Yeah, I mean, twenty years at the same rate, and I just, in the last year, let alone, I can't imagine a thing that hasn't cost more in the last twenty years. And to, you know, I think our residents expect a service, and for it to be done well, and the reality is, is that service costs money. And it's cost more money than it cost twenty years ago. And so, I, again, I get it, if we could get the numbers, that'd be fine, but at the same time, we got to, we have to move forward. There's not an option.
Any other questions? So, yeah, I'll just add a couple things. You know, it has been twenty years, and our rate, you know, is extremely low. If you're living outside the city and you're having it picked up by a private service, you're paying substantially more than $13. So we know that the figure is $1.74 plus. So, and I, I think we'll be, I don't want to use the word "well below," but I think we'll be below the $5. So we're looking at somewhere between $1.74 and $3 or $4 per month for residential. Is that safe?
Very much, yeah. I mean, I, like I said, I'm trying to, I would anticipate three is what, what my initial, where I've been looking. I know I'm throwing it out there, but that's, that's what.
I just, you know, try to make that, 2003 was the last rate increase. That's a long time, so.
Mr. McDaniel, I think.
Yes, Mr.
And bulk pickup is going to be separate, still?
Yeah, bulk pickup, still bulk pickup. So what I would be looking at would be stuff that's in the ordinance. We'd have to bring a whole new ordinance through.
Will bulk pickup go up, too, or will it remain the same, do you think?
I'm looking at bulk pickup remaining the same.
Okay.
No price changes in any bulk pickup. Commercial would be the same. Our commercial rates are very in line with the industry out there, so I don't see any, we would be pricing ourselves above if we do that. I don't want to.
With businesses, you pick up seven days a week?
Six. We have some that we do six days a week, yeah. But I would look for increases at the transfer itself, because just for instance, we're at $45 a ton right now at the transfer station, if you bring in goods. Of that $45, the sanitation department retains $12.75 of that, after we pay hauling, the EPA, the solid waste district, the township, the ODNR, we have $12.75 of that $45. So that's something.
So do you think you could put something out there to show, like, what it has rate, I know this will be more to do, but at least show maybe what ODNR, or whatever, how much it had gone up from a year to a year? Just because I do know rates have gone up for just trash on our end, not just picking up, but, you know, to dispose.
Well, next year, we, per contract, we have a Republic increase, which is another $1.20, so.
And we can't help but know that.
What we're going to take is going to, so I look for, to request rate increase at the transfer station, and then probably increase the, ask to increase the minimum there, which we're luckily well below anybody in the area there still. And then residentially, a request across the board there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
So, if there are no objections, we're looking at two readings on this. And Mr. Ailes, will you be the second?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance seven twenty-three, an ordinance to enter into a temporary construction easement and permanent general utility easement with the Lancaster Port Authority for the lateral D trunk sewer project, and declaring emergency. This is coming out of Water, wastewater. Mr. James?
Thank you, Chairman McDaniel. This has to do with an easement for the lateral D trunk sewer project. And we got a really good email from Law Director Hall explaining why we would need to suspend. And if she'd like to add anything to it, I'd like to yield some time to that.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. I was getting ready to pull up the email, but I generally know off the top of my head why we need you to suspend on this piece. So, the lateral D trunk sewer has been planned for quite some time, but we just got the engineering, surveying, legal descriptions back at the beginning of March. The property that those easements is going to go through is Lancaster Port Authority property. And so, we provided the information to them prior to their March fourteenth, thirteenth, thirteenth or fourteenth meeting, and they approved a resolution to permit these easements across their property at that time. So we couldn't bring it to city council until after they had approved the resolution to go ahead and allow the city to do the easements across their property. And it's my understanding that the end of March is when this needs these easements to be in place to satisfy construction timing. So that's the reason that we're asking you to suspend this evening. I didn't attach the temporary or permanent easements, because they are, they're kind of big, but they're on file with the clerk, if anybody would like to see those. And we're still working out the language with regard to those specifically. But the legislation that I did indicates that I'm allowed to amend them, so long as it's not anything that's potentially adverse to the city, which I represent both the city and the port in this situation, so it's kind of a back and forth issue. But hopefully, if you suspend and pass this tonight, we'll get it all wrapped up in time to help Denise and the timing on the construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on seven twenty-three? Mr. James, what's your pleasure?
We will suspend on it tonight, or ask for suspension, and Mr. Madlin will be my second on that.
Suspension on seven twenty-three, and Mr. Madlin is the second. All right, are there any departmental updates? Mr. Mayor?
I don't see anybody from the gas department here, but today, you should have received an email earlier that gas rates will be declining due to market changes, the international gas market, and the cost per hundred cubic feet for the gas volumetric charge will be going down from a dollar to seventy-three cents, a twenty-seven cent decrease, which represents a twenty-two and a half percent decrease in the volume gas charges, because there's a transportation charge that goes along with that, too. So, that will be effective with gas usage in April, which will show up in the May bill. So, a significant decrease in natural gas cost for residents.
That's some good news. Are there any other departmental updates? All right, same then. I'll turn this over to President O for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two other ordinances to work through tonight. The first one is temporary ordinance four twenty-three to repeal and replace Lancaster codified ordinance, rules of council, section 111061, standing committees coming through law. Mrs. Graves?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to replace existing language in the section for standing committees. More specifically, it changes the name of the committee IT Telecom to accurately reflect the committee's work with the GIS group as well. There's some additional language cleanups that Law Director Hall identified during her review, and because the committee is working, already doing the work, and this update is administrative in nature, and brings the title current, the law committee is recommending one read on it.
Very good. And what do we change the name to?
It will be IT Telecom GIS.
And GIS, okay. Yep, that's right. Very good. Any questions? All right, and so one reading. Who's your second?
Ms. Tina.
Ms. Tina will second. Very good. So one reading on temporary ordinance four twenty-three. We also have temporary ordinance five twenty-three to establish a new chapter, eleven thirty, of Lancaster Codified Ordinance entitled Shared Micro-Mobility Rental Services. This is also coming through law. Mrs. Graves?
Yes, Law Director Hall is very familiar, and I don't know if you want to speak to it.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So, Law Committee had asked my department to review being proactive with the shared micro-mobility rental services. You see Lime and Bird all over Columbus, and the city administration, myself, I know the mayor, Paul, Stephanie Bosco, and several others are constantly being solicited with, by companies that want the city of Lancaster to allow these shared micro-mobility rental services to operate in our right of way. And so, the issue came up at Law Committee. They asked us to review potentially proactively prohibiting those services in the city of Lancaster for a variety of reasons. If they want to speak to those, we'll allow them. But basically, safety and aesthetics are the main concerns. Not to mention, you know, Main Hill, which seems pretty dangerous for anybody on a scooter. But regardless, this was the result of that. We introduced it at the last Law Committee meeting and went over it with the members that were there, and they indicated that they would like to see it put forward, just to kind of stop the questions, and help make it clear how the city of Lancaster feels about these services at this time.
Okay, very good.
And then I would just add that, because we're, the law committee's concerned about the safety of the public, that we are asking for it to pass as an emergency with three readings.
Okay. Any questions? Do you have a sense of how many cities ban this sort of thing?
I can't give you a number exactly. I know when Mitch looked to see if there were any, so there are only a couple of ordinance publishing companies in the state of Ohio, and one does half, and the other does half. But the company that does ours, there were quite a few in there to take a look at, and to see how we wanted to model ours. So it's not uncommon. It's happening pretty regularly, apparently.
That there's a full-out ban on it?
There's a prohibition.
Okay. Very good. Other questions? Okay, so, three readings, and who's your second?
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Schoonover will second. Very good. So three readings then on temporary ordinance five twenty-three. It looks like that's all there is for meeting prep. I'll turn back to the chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other items to come before finance? Any other items for finance? Not on entertain them. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Six twenty-two, the regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at six thirty. I think we should just. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Here.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
And Ms. Tina?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening, reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of city officials?
There are. A series of emails dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, regarding the agenda for IT Committee submitted by Mrs. Tina. Email dated twenty twenty-three, CDVG Allocation Public Carrying, submitted by Tammy Gunther, Program Coordinator, CDVG. Email dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, regarding Finance Committee Meeting submitted by Treasurer Tom Stoughton. Email dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, regarding Finance Committee Agenda for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Mr. McDaniel. And finally, a pamphlet from the city of Lancaster, Three Mile Street Levy Resurfacing Levy Vote Yes Flyer, submitted by Mayor David Scheffler.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file reports of city officials.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There's one, the Fairfield County National Day of Prayer, celebrated on May fourth, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Ann Woodruff. Woodruff, I'll get it here. Woodruff.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file communications.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations or awards tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time, Lancaster City Council sets time aside to allow the voters and taxpayers of the city to address us on any item or issue they would like. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? All right, well, if not, thank you all for being here. Reports of standing committees.
IT Telecom Committee Meeting Minutes dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Mrs. Tina. Service Committee Meeting Minutes dated February third, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Mr. Porter. Law Committee Meeting Minutes dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Mrs. Kreitz. And finally, the Finance Committee Meeting Minutes dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So there are reports of special committees.
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution forty-two dash twenty-three.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Fire Impact District One Fund, three zero two two, and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county, Fairfield County Auditor, and to authorize the issuance of a then annulled certificate offered by Mr. Matlin, seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Matlin?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution number forty-two twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution forty-two dash twenty-three. Discussion, Mr. Matlin?
Yes, just a reminder, this basically fixes a clerical error. We voted back in July of twenty twenty-one to purchase a new medic vehicle, but the monies from that resolution were never moved into an account to pay for it. Now in May, the truck's going to come, so we're just fixing that so we can pay for the new truck.
Very good, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution forty-two dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution forty-four dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the twenty twenty-three sewer rehabilitation project, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Tina.
Mr. James?
Thank you, President O. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon a written record, Temporary Resolution number forty-four dash twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution forty-four dash twenty-three. Discussion, Mr. James?
Just briefly, thank you. This gives us the opportunity to go out for bid, to rehab all the designated parts of the sewer system that needs some repair. We've discussed this certainly a couple readings ago, and that would now tonight, it's time to pass it and allow him to go out to bid for it.
Thank you very much, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution forty-four dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Second reading on Temporary Resolution forty-six dash twenty-three.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Cemetery Fund, two zero zero seven, and to amend the certificate of appropriation with the Fairfield County Auditor for the purchase of mowing and trimming equipment offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution forty-six twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution forty-six dash twenty-three. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Yeah, we discussed this at last meeting. Contracts for mowing services are becoming harder and harder to secure. The Cemetery Department and LDOT feels like they can take on some of the work on their own, we just need to purchase the equipment. So we're asking for suspension. As you can tell, it looks like grass is going to start growing here real quick, if it hasn't already, and we need to get it purchased.
Mr. Ailes says mow twice, he tells me. Very good, further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution forty-six twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution forty-six dash twenty-three. Mr. Schoonover?
Nothing further.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution forty-six dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. We now have, well, are there any other resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council? If not, we'll move to ordinances with the first reading of Temporary Ordinance four dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to repeal and replace Lancaster codified ordinance, Part One Administrative Code Title III, Legislative Chapter one eleven, Rules of Council, Section one eleven point zero six point one, Standing Committees of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster, offered by Mrs. Kreitz and seconded by Mrs. Tina.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Ordinance temporarily number four dash twenty-three.
Yes, second, sorry.
We have a motion and a yes to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading, Temporary Ordinance four dash twenty-three. Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes, thank you. As discussed during Finance Committee, this is to update the name of the IT Telecom Committee to the IT Telecom and GIS. Additionally, there are some updates with clarifying language that Law Director Hall made. And we are asking for suspension because it's administrative in nature of the law.
Very good, further discussion on the motions to suspend. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Ordinance temporarily number four dash twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance four dash twenty-three. Discussion, Mrs. Kreitz?
Nothing further, thank you.
You're welcome, discussion on the motion to pass. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance four dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Temporary Ordinance five dash twenty-three.
An ordinance establishing a new Chapter one, or eleven thirty, of the Lancaster codified ordinances entitled Shared Micro-Mobility Rental Services and to declare an emergency, offered by Mrs. Kreitz and seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the first of three readings.
First of three readings then on Temporary Ordinance five dash twenty-three. Temporary Ordinance six dash twenty-three.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of two million six hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of a quick acquisition, construction, installation, and replacement of existing solid waste transfer station, including a prefabricated metal building, concrete pad driveway approach, fencing, and other necessary appointments thereto in declaring an emergency, offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Mr. McDaniel? This will be the first of two readings. First of two readings then on Temporary Ordinance six dash twenty-three. Temporary Ordinance seven dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to enter into a temporary construction easement and permanent general utility easement with the Lancaster Port Authority for the lateral dreey trunk sewer protection, or project, and declaring an emergency, offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded, or excuse me, offered by, I didn't change it on the sheet, I apologize, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Matlin.
Yes, Mr. James?
Thank you, President O. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance seven dash twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance seven dash twenty-three. Discussion, Mr. James?
Just briefly, as a reminder, Law Director Hall was gracious enough to put together a really good justification for the suspension. This will really help us start to get some of the contracts in place and start this whole process of the construction.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Thank you again, President O. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon a written record, Temporary Resolution seven dash twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance seven dash twenty-three. Mr. James?
Nothing further, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance seven dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Are there other ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, there's no tabled legislation tonight. Is there any unfinished business? Does anyone have any new business? If not, we'll ask that the clerk read our announcement of scheduled meetings.
Next meeting of Lancaster City Council is April tenth. The meeting following is April twenty-fourth. Both meetings here in council chambers is six thirty P.M. Upcoming committee meetings for the next thirty days. Code Enforcement, April tenth at seven thirty A.M. at the eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Finance, April tenth, six P.M., here in council chambers. Water, Water Pollution, April twelfth, eight thirty A.M. at the eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Public Works, April fourteenth at seven thirty A.M. at the eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Economic Development, April twentieth at seven thirty A.M. at the eighteen ninety-seven conference room. IT Telecom, April twenty-first at eight A.M. at the eighteen ninety-seven conference room. And finally, Finance, April twenty-fourth, here at six P.M. in council chambers.
Thank you very much, are there any bills this evening?
One bill payable to MNCO for publication of legislation in the amount of one hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety cents paid on our PNC card.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bill.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pay the bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. I know of no need for an executive session. If not, then a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion, we adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please remember to sign your legislation. Have a safe and happy Easter. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.